I announce that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board's office via Zoom, and ask if there's anyone present who is also recording this meeting. Let the minutes reflect that nobody else has indicated that they are recording this meeting. All right. Called meeting to order, and we'll start with the consent agenda. Warrants number AP 2304, AP 2304S, PR 2301, PR 2228, AP 2305V, AP 2305, AP 2305S, the Common Victular's License for Fun Hub LLC, DBA Fun Hub Action Park, a memorandum of understanding with the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District in the town of Hadley regarding hauling and disposal of sludge, a veteran service intermunicipal agreement between the city of North Canton and the town of Hadley. Motion to approve the consent agenda? Second? Motion by Molly, second by Amy. Roll call vote because we're not all present.
Roll call, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Thank you. Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
If you haven't signed it yet, you can just go ahead and try next. We're a little early for hearing. Jumping to or trying to five? The bylaw, the bylaw. The bylaw committee met, and they have decided to have co-chairs. They voted Jessica Spankable and Jim Maximowski as such. Several committee members had asked what their charge was, and to the knowledge of those present, no charge had been specified. Therefore, the bylaw committee has come up with a proposed charge that they request approval or amendment by the Select Board. Said charge as follows: Review current general town of Hadley bylaws and add, delete, or amend as necessary to meet current and anticipated town needs. I think we need to amend that slightly to say, "All additions, deletions, or amendments to be approved at town meeting." Chair?
We had them.
Ultimately, that's what's got to happen with it.
We don't have that authority.
But they need to not be totally... It will be easier to take it to town meeting and say, "This paragraph has been changed to this," or move to here, or whatever, if it's still all sort of intact and you can follow that.
We fully realize any changes need to go to town meeting.
Okay.
So what did that leave everybody?
I have it written down here for you.
Okay.
Now, before that happens, isn't there like other committees that offer recommendations?
Yeah, the bylaw committee is not a committee that's going to accomplish this quickly, so they will get input from all departments, employees, any stakeholder that impacts your part, impacts the bylaws. So it really is, you're looking at, I would say, a minimum of two-year procedure.
It's a whole year.
Excuse me, sir, can you state your name for the...
All right.
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim Maximowski.
Thank you, June.
My fault, so much to introduce you. Everybody knows.
Everybody knows.
Except me.
This is fascinating.
So do we need a motion for this?
Yes, I think we do.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the charge for the bylaw committee as amended. One second.
Motion by Molly, second by Amy. Roll call vote please, Dan.
Roll call, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo? Chunglo?
Yes.
Thank you. Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan? Yes.
All right. Let's just sit for a minute, or I could read the letter I got in behalf of... Supporting permit for Carr's before we start the hearing. Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Something else we can do in three minutes?
I'm looking though.
I had your question long.
It's not a few minutes.
There is? Want to be all ready, but issue a reminder about the Hadley Housing Survey?
Sure.
Just a reminder that we're currently... There's a Hadley Housing Survey underway. You should be able to access that on the town's website. I believe that there were stuffers put in, the most recent mailing of the water and sewer bills. So this is something that's being promoted by the Housing Production Plan Subcommittee, working with the Planning Board and the Housing and Economic Development Committee. So we're looking for as much participation as possible. There are a variety of ways to access that survey. So again, you can go to the town website, you can go to the library. I believe the senior center, Jane, as well?
Yes.
Has, again, something...
Hard copies.
That there are hard copies, there's a QR code that can be scanned, and there's also an online survey. So if you haven't done so already, we would encourage you to participate.
That's good with everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Carr's Cider House has requested a pouring permit, which is from the Massachusetts State Farmer Series Pouring Permit. Jonathan, you want to talk about that?
Yep. Hi, I'm Jonathan Carr.
What do we want? He's going to take you on mic.
Is he going to take you on mic?
I guess he's on camera.
You're opening a public hearing.
You want to fire this? If that one does not.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jonathan Carr. This is my wife, Nicole Blong. We run Carr's Cider House at 295 River Drive. We are asking you to approve a Farmer Series Pouring Permit for us, which will allow us to open a small outdoor tasting area, kind of like a mini version of what we did on West Street a couple of years ago, where we were able to pour samples and serve glasses of hard cider and other beverages too, other non-alcoholic beverages that we make as part of our business. And so, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into. If you have any questions about it, it's going to be a fairly small, kind of low-key setup, just outdoors only, seasonal, just in the fall, weekends from 12 to 6. It's not going to be late night, it's not going to be, certainly not going to be anything approaching a bar. I know this is technically a pouring license, but that's not our intent at all with this. So that's my spiel, I guess.
Do you guys sell by the bottle as well?
We do. We sell by the bottle from the farm stand.
Okay. And if someone buys it there, they can't drink it, right?
Right, as it is now, yeah, because that's on-premises consumption. Yep.
Alex, enter.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Yeah, I know there was concern about parking and all that. Has that been rectified?
Yeah, so we worked that through with the Planning Board, and they approved our parking plan, and the DPW approved another curb cut. So basically, what we can do is we'll accommodate a certain amount of limited parking by the farm stand, but we'll have an overflow parking area in our field next to it with a dedicated exit, so nobody has to back out onto Route 47. They can just pull through and pull out safely. And so that, you know, if we're lucky enough to be that busy, that's how we'll handle it, so.
Yes, Randy, I have that information here if you want to look at it, the whole packet.
If someone disagrees with him, I know there's enough people in the audience that would straighten the hour. But thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience? Anybody want to speak to this public hearing? All right, may I have a look? And I just wanted to see if I could have the... If we didn't have any proof, which is included in the board docs of the former question. Shall I read that to the audience?
You should, I think.
Okay. Good afternoon. I was hoping to attend the public hearing for the pouring permit for Carr's Cider House. However, I have a job-related event this evening, and I am not able to attend. My comments are as follows, and I'm hoping you could forward them to the Select Board. I am supportive of this endeavor, and the concerns that I did have were addressed in an in-person conversation that I had with Jonathan Carr last week. Those concerns were: One, that the days of operation would be limited primarily to weekends and holidays; Two, that the hours of operation would not extend beyond 7:00 PM on the days that they are open; Three, and that this endeavor would not eventually transition into a, quote, "barroom-like" operation. As we all know, this is a quiet residential agricultural neighborhood, and I am very appreciative that Mr. and Mrs. Carr respect that, and they wish it to remain that way. If this permit is granted, I want to wish the Carrs good luck and success. Paul McRitzky.
Motion to approve the request from Carrs? Second?
Motion by Molly, second by Amy. Roll call vote.
Roll call, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. We're now open for public comments. This period is for public comments. It will not be acted on by the Select Board tonight. I take them under advisement. Comments are limited to three minutes, please. James, identify yourself if you're going to speak.
Jane, you need to formally close the public.
Oh, I have to formally close the public hearing. I have to formally close that public hearing.
Should I sit in front of the camera and pick them up from that?
Yeah.
Yes, we should. Fancy. All right.
Do I need the microphone?
Yes.
My name is Judy Roncolli. I live at Golden Court. I am wondering if the Select Board has any power or whatever over the Board of Health. I'm trying to get something done with the Board of Health, and they refuse to even acknowledge that I've called or emailed.
We did not remove a reminder.
I can send them a reminder?
I will send a reminder.
You will?
Yes.
Okay. It's about mold. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom raising a hand for a public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let us go into public comment, into old business. Maple Farm Creamery's entertainment license adjustment. Jane?
Maple Farm Creamery is before the Board to adjust their entertainment license from a closing time of 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. This was heard by the Planning Board, and I do have their vote of approval on that.
Any questions?
Motion to amend the entertainment license for Maple Farm Creamery from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Wait a second.
It's actually Maple Valley Creamery.
Maple Valley, we should...
They're not playing at the food place.
But I think it's easier for not to be, I watched the Carrs' last week, and it just said entertainment for hours of operation. Are hours different when we're open at noon at 6:00 AM? Would it be easier for enforcement if we're all open for entertainment during that hours of operation?
Do you want to go through the process of changing it again?
Well, no, but I mean, no, no. This is permitted, play until 7:00, and then it was changed here, just hours of operation. It seems easier to all. I don't care either way, but our hours of operation close at 8:00, so I mean, it essentially is our hours of operation, but I don't know if you just want to put that on the permit for the enforcement side of it, so that everybody is consistent with what the permit says.
I think if you needed to, because they would have to edit it again, I would have to go back, and then I'd have to get revoted, and then I'd have to come back here, so I would just take what you have. Because even if you, if it gets approved here, right, then it's good, and then if you want to amend it later, you can still operate under what already exists, right?
Our hours are 8 o'clock, so I mean, it's fine the way it is. I just don't know if the wording on the permit, you wanted it to be the same as what you changed the Carrs' to last meeting when I was here.
So these entertainment licenses are relatively new, and I think by next year we'll have a new one.
Chad, it just seems like hours of operation makes more sense than eight, seven, five.
But this covers you.
We're open really late with their cows. We may have to close them down. I don't know.
Yeah. It's fine with me, because 8 o'clock is when we close.
All right.
Okay.
So we have a motion?
I think so.
No, joint state.
Roll call.
Roll call, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
That covers you.
Eight o'clock is when we close. It's fine.
Thank you.
All right. Atwood House in the third tenant representative. We have two candidates, both are here tonight. Melissa, would you like to speak first?
No, please, one of us. It doesn't matter to me.
Fine.
Thank you. Did I push? I push this? Okay, thank you. Should I stand up or... Good evening, and thank you to everyone for being here and providing this opportunity. My name is Melissa, and it was a pleasure to meet you. I have had honors of taking courses at some of the most prestigious academic institutions such as Caltech and local, not homework, throughout my adulthood. I was diagnosed with lupus in college, to which I now have 19 years of tremendous growth and experience in observing Golden Court, the community I've loved. This is a tenancy and therefore about done. What must be done to help make their living experience at Golden Court a happy and fulfilling one that encourages transparent dialogue, fairness, efficiency, high ethical conduct, immunity on common grounds we all share? It is each ten in that seat as my reality sitting there, given just one of many faces as a reminder of what the purpose of caring for what is indeed our own home. I wanted for them to decide whom I wanted representing their concerns. Being inconsistent in my 19 years of residence is lack of change. When asked to put my name on, I was sincerely touched in my surmountable responsibility in serving tenant wishes and bringing their strong voice of reason. I made that my mission to finally introduce a fundamental change that we can hope will be the turning point encouraging in their satisfying life to which elderly and disabled people can feel secure, comfortable, treated with dignity and utmost respect as they deserve. I'm dedicated to the betterment of a pleasant, healthier atmosphere in which we are genuinely grateful, filled with pride, joy, and a sense of belonging with neighborly purpose and delight. I represent immense uplifting, exciting, inclusive, and positive change. I strive for my fellow tenants to feel comfort in knowing their problems are mine. Thank you for listening, your time and consideration.
Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome, Jane.
The other candidate...
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Risa Smith-Freed. I've lived at Golden Court for, it'll be five years, the beginning of December. I was a registered nurse, licensed in Massachusetts, and, well, let's see, I've been in nursing for 29 years, and then I retired. I have served on boards for about 16 years, professional organizations, and worked on committees, work-related committees. And most recently, too, in Hadley and near Hadley, was I served on the, a subcommittee for the Library Building Committee called Sustainability Committee, and also for Habitat for Humanity in the Tenant Selection Committee. I'm very familiar with board work, and it is work. There's well-defined responsibilities for each member of the Board of Commissioners for Housing here in Massachusetts. I familiarized myself with the Board Training Manual, the changes in administrative and policy and procedure for the Department of Housing and Community Development. So I really do think I would be a good tenant representative. And the tenant representative, it's a relatively new role within the past few years, but it is to represent the tenants, but also to represent, to be a member of the Board of Commissioners requires a knowledge of policy and procedure, an ability to understand and work with policy and procedure, also to be able to work, well, the board responsibility has to do with contracts and finances, and policy and procedure, of course, and supervision and oversight of the executive director. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the candidates?
Can I, Risa? And I apologize if I didn't catch it, but can you say a little bit more about why you're interested in serving in this position?
I am very happy at Golden Court, and I'm also very grateful for the housing. We have had problems at Golden Court, and I think that every single tenant who wants to speak deserves to be heard. And there's methods for making sure that happens in our open meetings of the Board I'm familiar, I was president of a board for eight years, and I'm familiar with the open meeting laws, but also, as you all know, how to manage a meeting so that people are heard in a manner that preserves the integrity of the meeting.
Melissa, would you like to answer that same question?
Thank you. I'm sorry, but can you please repeat the question?
Yeah, I was just asking, Risa, why she wanted to be on the board, and I think you said some of it in your prepared comments, but if you just want to, you know, why you've applied for...
Thank you. I was approached by a gentleman who was serving on the board. He was known also to lead the Golden Court Committee, and he asked me, I suppose he saw the potential in me, and that I've spent so many years residing there and had ideas, and that he felt that I was coming from a place of honesty, and that I had the best of intentions for us as tenants. And so he respected me, and as I respect him, and he asked me if I would put my name there. I am not typically a political person, and I'm not really someone that gets involved. I'm actually pursuing my future and a career, actually similar to my fellow candidate, Ruth, in nursing. I'm pursuing practical nursing. And I had shared such a pleasant conversation with this other board member that, in which he had, he'd encouraged me to do so, and I felt very flattered by that, and I took it into consideration, and I decided to just try and pursue and see, see what happens. And it means a lot to me, the support, the smiles, and the greetings even tonight, that I feel that that was the right thing to do, and so no matter what, I'm glad and proud that I decided to, to at least try. And so on behalf of everyone and what we've, what we've experienced, so that's, that's my reason, is just the best of intentions to try and make people's lives happier and more comfortable as a resident in Golden Court. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question of both of them. You both lived in Golden Court for quite some time, so you probably know the majority of the people that live there with you. How... How do you anticipate dealing with a situation where you've got somebody over here that you know and somebody over here that you know and they disagree with you? How would you propose to handle something like that? I realize every situation is different, but just curious to know what you, how would you think?
Well, perhaps because it's up in the neighborhood, but I tend to be very fear-minded. I'm really good at moving myself and my personal feelings in a situation and being impartial and neutral. And I felt that that has been lacking where we live. And so, I would, I would try to be diplomatic and find the best compromise that I would try to encourage, a solution that in which each tenant can be respected and come up with resolve that will be peaceful and pleasing to each tenant. Maybe perhaps not each of them are going to be thrilled with the outcome, but the important aspect is that there is, there is some kind of solution that is come up with that, that brings people together in the sense that we understand that we are sharing a housing facility. And so, there needs to be a little bit of compromise in that process. But hopefully, each tenant can be, can be content and happy going forward where that will be part of the past and move forward into the future. You're welcome.
Thank you. My answer would be quite a bit different. My word of the role and responsibilities of a member of the Board of Commissioners is not to settle disputes between tenants. It is, again, the legal responsibilities of the housing authority, the financial responsibilities, policy and procedure, and oversight and supervision of the executive director. The scenario that you present, Mr. Isner, is more akin to what a local tenant's organization would be. That's their role in situations like that. We do not yet have a tenant organization at Golden Court and that is certainly something that needs to happen.
Joyce, any questions?
I, I know, I've heard both sides and nobody has a, I mean, there's, there doesn't seem to be an agenda on either one, except that they, you know, certainly want to participate and help the tenants of the Golden Court. So, you know, to me, I think either one of them would be a good asset to the committee. I personally, right now, don't presentation.
Nothing further. So, are you looking for an option?
An option to appoint?
Okay, first of all, I just want to say thank you to both of you. Again, anybody who's willing to volunteer, much appreciated. So, thank you both for stepping forward and hopefully, you know, obviously, one of you won't be appointed, but I would hope that that wouldn't deter you from wanting to continue to participate in some way. So again, thank you. I think knowing, you know, the situation kind of in general at Golden Court and the fact that there's some new board members involved, my recommendation is going to be to appoint Reese. I appreciate the board's experience in particular right now. I think Melissa clearly has a lot of passion that comes across loud and clear, that's wonderful. But I think from just more practical, day-to-day operational matter, I like the background that Reese brings to the table. So, my recommendations to appoint Reese to the tenant representative position.
I will second that.
Any further discussions?
We'll call Nevin Smith? Chunglo?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Joyce. Parsons? Isner? Keegan?
All right. The board should come forward, please.
Don't we have to call?
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna call the Board of Health meeting to order.
Okay, we're gonna call the Board of Health.
We're calling our Board of Health meeting to order at 6:45. We have myself, Susan Mosler, and Margaret Mosstrangela.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Read it into the recording? It did come through very clearly.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm Strangela. Thank you.
Board of Health vacancy. We have four candidates, I see one of whom is on our meeting. For anyone here in the audience, not that I recognize. Not happy, not, not happy. I, I'm just gonna say that I'm not happy anyway, I'm gonna say it because the story is just not. All right. So, we have one candidate.
Jane, were the candidates notified that this was gonna be discussed tonight? Were they called and told?
I called housing authority.
Right, and I sent emails out?
You did send emails.
Well, I also asked Peter to send emails to the candidates. I only got the information from you. I requested Peter, Peter to get me the information previously and then I had reached out to you, Susan.
So, nobody from?
I didn't receive any responses from the candidates.
You have a couple of hands raised.
We have hands raised.
Ivan?
Yes, I'm not sure. I think I've already received health approval, but I was supposed to be on the select board meeting tonight. I'm not sure if I heard it incorrectly, but it sounded like the select board is over and the health board is meeting now?
No. Jane, this is Ivan from back there. This is Ivan from back there, he's later on the agenda.
You're later on the agenda, Ivan. Emma?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You are later, oh.
I apologize, I'll wait my turn. Thank you.
You're later in the agenda, Ivan.
Thank you. I'll, I'll go back on mute. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I didn't receive any communication about this being on this agenda tonight, Dr. Mosler and Jane, just for your information. I, unless maybe I missed something, but I don't remember seeing any email communication come through or anything with this being on this agenda tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna make mention.
Okay.
Continue it. Thank you for coming, Emma.
Do we know who's going to?
All right, well, we will.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Yeah, we're gonna close our, our Board of Health meeting, we're gonna adjourn.
Who's going, who's, who's gonna notify the applicants?
We're, we're gonna touch base and we're gonna get clarified.
So who was, who was notifying the applicants?
The Select Board Office. Have a good night. All right, moving on to the select and the letter of support for a condo lot. And our last meeting, we requested a little while we write the letter. We want what we wanted to send and it is attached. Hopefully, you've already read it. And then there are two items that I requested from the people from TBC. One is a list of, excuse me, six of their units, the kind of property there are, the number of units, the total number of calls they had in the period, the last six months. So that was from February 8th to August 8th. And they are arranged, so the total calls and how many units there were in that six-month period. And then it raises down to what kinds of calls they were.
And Jane, you know that we don't have that information in our files.
It is. All right.
I got it. Yeah.
Molly, did you wanna see?
Oh, it's the first one. Yep, the one that says agenda.
And the second, the second piece is in response to Randy's question last time, which was what happened to the assessed values? And as they told us then, many of them were completely renovated. So the value changed, but this is the difference between what they were and what they changed.
Thank you for that information, Jane.
I think the lumberyard is probably closest to what we're looking at, 55 apartments. Although someone goes in Lundy Mawser and Lundy back badly.
That was a whole different animal. They tore down the old.
Right, and built something newer. Anyway.
And so, just generally for anybody who can't see the information, the three, so it's got lot 155, it was 155, plus Street North Hampton, the lumberyard, and then Valley King Street. And in all cases, the redeveloped used value is significantly higher than the prior value. That would affect.
Fair assessment. Probably that's very intuitive. All right, and then we have the letter, the rewritten letter, which I think is very clear, much more.
Yeah, I like the revised version better.
I would make a motion to have the chairman of the Select Board sign the revised letter of support for the condo lot.
Second?
Sorry, oh, I was gonna say the first portion on here is police calls? Is that the question?
It's all calls.
All calls?
Yes. This was really strung out and really long list, so it was hard to follow.
Like KDA calls in six months?
Yeah. I have a motion by Randy, a second by Molly. Is there any other discussion? Joyce?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
No.
Parsons?
Nope.
Isner?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, move it. Council on Aging, I see Haley in the audience. Haley, would you like to speak on extended hours?
Sure, hello, thank you. Yeah, on August 9th, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The Council on Aging voted to approve two, two nights, two days a week of having extended hours from nine to seven, in contrast with the usual opening hours of nine to four. We seek to be accessible to older adults who are still working and just not able to visit the center or utilize the resources there during the nine to four business hours. So we are seeking your approval for being open nine to seven on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And it will be staffed.
Is there a financial impact?
No, I, I and another person on our staff will offset hours and come in later and stay later on the days that we're open until seven.
Okay, thanks Haley.
Motion to approve the extended hours.
Second?
Motion by Joyce, second by Molly. Further discussion? Roll, roll vote, please.
Roll call vote. Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously.
Waving.
All right, more business from the Council on Aging. Haley?
So it's on the agenda that our, the, the original person that we hired to be our 19-hour-a-week administrative assistant, Leslie Owens, resigned on, I think it was August 9th. And we have offered that job to another finalist among the applicants named Catherine Abe. She's here, I believe. And we, we had, with the help of Jen Travato, there were four finalists selected to be interviewed for this process and for this job and they were all interviewed in June. Every single one of them was an outstanding applicant, very qualified. And I am, when Leslie resigned for personal reasons, I offered the job to Catherine, who very graciously accepted. And I hope, I think you've all had an, had an opportunity to review her resume. I've also had an opportunity to speak with some references who all attest to her intelligence, conscientious nature, ability to learn quickly, and impressive interpersonal skills. And so, we would like Catherine to begin work and she has agreed that a start date that works for her is next Monday, the 22nd. And I'm hoping to have your approval.
So we have two technical things. First, we have to accept the resignation and then separate, except for appoint.
And can I just clarify, just, just for procedural, this is a recommendation from the Council on Aging, you are the authorizing. the Council on Aging, you are the authorizing, and so I, the candidate is here, is that correct, Haley? You might want to just ask questions because that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
So it is based on your.
Right.
Do we have to see the other applicant, or do we just go based on the recommendation?
In this case, I would go based by the recommendations, and also Jane was part of that process, Jen is on, Jen Travado is on as well.
So maybe Catherine could.
Why don't we accept the resignation first?
Okay, sure, so I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of the incumbent.
Second.
All those in favor, oh no, roll call vote, sorry.
Roll call, Levensmith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Parsons? Isner? Keegan?
Yes.
All right, moving along. Catherine, would you like to let us see you, please?
Wait, oh, hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
And can you see me now?
Yes, hi Catherine.
Hi, hello, I'm Catherine. This is my first Select Board meeting, so, um, it's very interesting seeing people, because I've been in Zoom meetings, but Zoom meetings I've been in, it's been, um, you know, people on, on the screen, like separately, and so this is kind of a hybrid situation. Um, so it's very interesting. It's very nice to meet all of you, and I'm very excited to join Haley's team. And I'm looking forward to meeting the staff and all the members and the volunteers when I start work next week.
All right. A motion to appoint Catherine to the position of, is it administrative?
Assistant.
Administrative assistant for the Council on Aging.
Second.
We'll give it to Randy, second by Randy.
Roll call, Levensmith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Parsons? Randy Isner? Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you, look forward to seeing you on Monday, Catherine.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to an APR project from Arthur West. This is, we have looked at some of his projects, this is an additional one, and this is a request to reduce the twenty, 120-day waiting period.
So. Can anybody tell us where this property is?
There's a map, if you look further down at the bottom of all these positions, and you see Bay Road running along the left.
It's, uh.
I know roughly where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I can't see the, I can't see the map, is it on Bay Road, Randy?
Yeah. The orchard, south of it.
Okay.
Thank you. At the moment, it's used for hay, mostly. So I have to read this, which says, "In compliance with GLC 7C, Section 37, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts acting by and through its Department of Agricultural Resources, the department hereby gives notice that it proposes to acquire an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on the real property identified herein for the purpose of protecting in perpetuity its superior and productive agricultural resources by preventing their conversion to other uses. The application received by M D A R indicates that the property is owned by Arthur West, William A. West, Robert A. West, and Philip A. West, and consists of parcels located at South Maple Street in Hadley as approximately represented on the attached map. The APR may encompass all or parts of the area shown. Current use of the property is primarily for hay and corn silage. The following recording of the APR, the use of the subject property is limited to agricultural use as more particularly set forth in the APR document, the General Laws, Chapter 184, Section 31, and the regulations of the department, 330 CMR, 22.0 due and following." And it's signed by the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, Ronald Hall.
I just wanted to clarify, because it, previously you had said Bay Road and it's South Maple Street.
Yeah.
So it's just south of Flavors Cook Farms on the left side, if you're going south.
It's at on the corner, Amy?
Yeah, it's right before the corner, because there's like the apple orchard that's on Bay Road, so it's just before the corner.
Okay.
Right, you can see East Hadley Road if you look closely.
Just above the red line.
Yeah, the dual entryway to the northwest is, is Flavors.
Right, yeah, okay. That makes sense.
Yep.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Amy?
Second?
Second.
Second by Molly. Roll call vote, please, Jane.
Roll call, Levensmith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, the discussion for the property, annual review of the town administrator as per contract, Carolyn is going into her third year, however, due to COVID, there was no review last year, for whatever reason, I don't know why, but I feel that this board needs to have a process to figure out an annual review. There are two potential, uh, three potential performance review forms that have been attached. And I don't know where we want to go from here, but I just have this thrown up as a starting place.
Have these been used in the past?
Well, the first one that was on, the first one that was on the review isn't pertinent to Carolyn, because we, she didn't do anything with SWAT. So that one, I think, should be totally off the books right there. I thought this. Say that again?
These were only potential samples that could be modified.
Well, the first one is, is not, I don't, I don't like it, I don't think it pertains to Carolyn or her job at all, so I think that's not fair to use that one whatsoever. The second one appeared to be much more applicable to her, so I was considering that one.
Yeah, just, um, Randy, if I can just give a little bit of background? So, and Joyce would know this obviously as well. So we used two different evaluation forms when David was town administrator, and these forms were used for some of the, the department heads who, as well. And one of, I think that first one was more free-flowing. So this is the one that says, you know, just Town of Hadley Performance Evaluation, FY20, and then it shows exceeds expectations, meets standards, et cetera. So that one, as a, as a board, what we did was we filled in, well, at that point, we had, we had established goals already, and so we just dropped those goals in, and then that's what the town administrator was, was evaluated on. And so that was fairly simple, just kind of check the boxes, and then people could comment as they saw fit. And then the second one that Joyce is referencing, we used a different time to kind of come up with a more of an overall score, if you will. So, you know, both of them worked fine. I mean, I think it's just really more of a preference.
I think one of the things that needs to happen is we have never, as best I know, set any kind of goals or standards that we are looking for, and I think we need to do that before we can judge something.
I think, yeah, absolutely, I would think it'd be fair to Carolyn if Carolyn knew what she was actually being evaluated on.
Right, and then also, I, I would love an opportunity at some point to present goals that I would, that I would say.
Right, okay.
Well, why don't we start with that and ask you to give us a list of goals that you have been working towards while you have been in office? And then we'll have to get that, how soon, one meeting, two meetings?
Um, no.
After Paul Bowden.
I'm right in the middle of getting a capital request to get on, so if you could just, I just need a, let's kind of.
I feel like I'm Nathan Burton coming up, thank you.
Yeah, that's because I'm on the way for four or five days. Um, I mean, I, I can even have it before town meeting, absolutely, I mean, I have a rough.
Let's look for, for the mid-September meeting, and if not, early October.
Yeah, oh yeah, and I, and I think also why we're in conversation, you need to think about, to even look at somewhat of a form of a 360 that I can do with department heads. And then also have my own self-assessment to provide to you as well.
Okay.
I can also, I don't know if you want this, just with that, the list served that I have with small town administrators, it includes bigger communities as well, I can shoot out a chat and say, does anybody have a form that you feel works really well? And some of them will tell you these are awful and you can quit a month later. So I would love, if you want me to, I can send that out, I can shoot that out.
Yeah, I don't think we're married to what we did before.
Right, getting all kinds of input is, is useful, and I don't know that we should ever stay with something just because it's always been done that way. And having a new administrator gives us an opportunity to expand our horizons. All right. All right. We're waiting for Mike to show up to do 6.6, 6.7. Jane, do you want to talk about this, please?
This is, this is Backyard Butchers. Ivan, I believe you're still on. Bill, are you on as well?
Bill Dwyer is on.
The Chairman of the Planning Board is here in the audience.
Oh, Jim is here, perfect.
Bill's on, perfect.
Bill's on as well, so we have all the necessary folks. So Backyard Butchers, Ivan, did you want to speak to what you were going to do at the Hampshire Mall?
Yes, um, yes, so my name is Ivan Quinones, and Backyard Butchers is getting ready to launch a direct-to-consumer online butcher shop. We have already done a few, I guess, I don't know, I don't know the proper word for it, but like a soft launch online, but we're doing some pop-up shops across the country, and we want to have one in, in Hadley as well. So pretty much the scope that we're asking for is, the mall is going to agree to let us use, utilize the very small portion of the parking lot the property owners are. And with that, we want to set up a small canopy, it's just 10 feet by 10 feet in size. That's just really to help us with shade for ourselves. And we'll have a small box freezer truck next to it, where we have some of our products on hand. This helps get the community to see the product in person so that they feel comfortable purchasing from us when we go live online. Ordering, you know, meat from somewhere that you haven't seen it in person, it might be different for some people, but, uh, with companies like Butcher Box and Omaha Steaks succeeding in it, we've done what we can to make sure that we have high-quality products, it's all USD inspected. What we will have on hand will be frozen and commercially prepackaged as well. We've gone before the Health Board, we've received their tentative approval, pending all other approvals as well, and we're just waiting to execute our final lease agreement with the mall property owners, once we know we have a good start date with the Town of Hadley. I've tried to make sure I've hit every point. I got an email early this morning, something about the Planning Board might want to look at it as well. That was news to me, but I want to make sure that I do everything the right way. I, I think I heard somebody from the Planning Board was there tonight, but I'm not sure what that means for me.
Yep, Bill Dwyer's on. Bill, did you want to say something?
Well, Jim is there too, so I'll defer to Jim as Chair.
He was pointing at you. Need your speaker, speaker.
Hyperphone, we call it.
Right, am I on now? This was presented to the Planning Board as a by-the-way from the mall manager last night at a meeting, and so we know nothing about this, you know, they said they're going to be a small operation, they're going to be there for a week or so, a little longer, they have a plan from the Board of Health good through the end of 2022. So we just want more detail of how much space we're going to use, what's the parking going to look like, are you going to be including, who are you going to be, want to make sure that it flows and they're not paying away or impeding anything, anything in the mall like flow traffic, fire lanes, whatever it might be, and how are people going to come and go? So we just want, we want the general, not a low-end kind of formal site plan approval, informal, you know, how much money are you going to take up? It may not be a lot, but that's just conjecture on the Planning Board's part, we want to know what they really plan on doing.
And the traffic flow, I assume would be part of that?
Yes.
And the fire department, seeing as you're here now?
Well, we would, we would have the planning board including, included in the flow to make sure of obvious reasons, I mean, we're not the experts on fire, on really reasonable on the flow, but as far as impeding fire access, that is their business.
I mean, what side of the parking lot is it going to be on? It's the southwest side, that's the dead part of the mall, anyway.
We don't know where they're going to be.
No, but Ivan, do you know where you're going to be?
We, since we don't have the start date yet, they haven't given us our exact spot, we'll tell you in our experience that we are always put, it's leased impeding on their current tenants, and of course, any, we always stay away from any fire lanes, any entrances, things like that. So you mentioned, I think you mentioned it's the dead side of the lot. The, the way we're hoping to get customers out, that we've been able to be successful in other locations, is through our marketing, you, uh, once it's time to go, once we get all of our approvals, you'll hear about us on radio ads, you'll, you might get some sponsored Facebook ads pop up on your, on, just on your Facebooks and things like that. So we spend quite a bit of money relative to, to what we're trying to do in marketing, and that's how we let people know exactly where we are. We have an online support team that interacts with customers in real time, and lets them know exactly where to find us. So even if we are deemed to be in a location that may not be ideal to most businesses, we're confident we can get customers out, out to us and take advantage of our deals.
So I have a question about where does the meat come from, and where is it processed, and who's inspecting it?
Yes, so the meat, we have a distributor that we work with, excellent company, that the name is Amity, A.M.I.T.Y. Packing Company Incorporated. They're actually based out of Chicago, Illinois, it's a wonderful facility, they're USD inspected. I'm not sure how many times a year they have un, you know, unannounced inspections, but if they find anything wrong with them, they can lose their license immediately by the U.S. Department of Ag. So they maintain an excellent reputation, which is why we choose to do business with them, and pretty much what they do for us is they prepare all the meat. They, they get all, I don't, I'm not exactly sure, I'm not too keen on the full processing side of it, but my understanding is they have a, a lot of farms that they work with, and they prepare the meat for us, they individually package and seal every single cut of meat, and it's flash-frozen, like within moments of being cut. And then they will label the box for us with our brand and ship it directly to where we are going to be. We usually place an order for where we want to go a few days before we start, so I, I feel confident in telling you that anytime we get a, a, we order inventory from Amity, from the time that we place the order to the time that it's in a customer's home, it could be days, it could be a few weeks, but the amazing thing about the way that they package it, the customer could keep it frozen for months at a time, if they, if they keep it frozen, but that's, that's up to the customer, a customer's choice.
Okay, I just have an addition here that, from the mall, that they are looking at locating this in the JCPenney sideline.
Yeah.
By the way, I meant absolutely no disrespect, I tend to create pretty good standbites for the paper, but I, I meant no disrespect with that, I just meant that it's a good area to have an additional event location, because people drive by it to go to the movie theater. I just meant that it's a good area to have an additional event location because people drive by it to go to the movie theaters and to other locations. It's just not like a huge entrance for the mall. So it's a good location if anyone is concerned about parking. There will be plenty.
Oh, okay. Oh, well, thanks for clarifying that. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't take it any wrong way either. I'm actually having trouble hearing on my end. I hope I'm answering your questions correctly. The gentleman, I think, from the planning board, I, I honestly didn't hear what he said. Um, it was really muffled.
Well, you're going to hear a lot more from him soon.
Ivan, how many days do you anticipate being there?
Uh, we, we like, we like to ask for two-week permits, up to 30 days. Um, I know the, I, I think you mentioned something about the health board approval being a lot longer. Um, even with that, we never, uh, it just doesn't make sense for us just because, uh, we're, the way we were trying to market. We want to hit an area, uh, be there for a couple of weeks. Uh, the people that are going to come out to us will come out to us usually in the first week or two. Um, after that, we're, we're pretty much just, you know, twiddling our thumbs there. So it doesn't make sense for us to stay in a location for too long. Once we hit enough, uh, customers, once we have enough customers that have come and, and shown interest in our products, uh, we text them receipts immediately, they can, uh, sign up for our, our email alerts. And, uh, like I said, we, we actually, I think, last week, um, started the soft launch of our direct-to-consumer business, which is really what the end goal of this was when we started this. Um, direct-to-consumer, we want to compete with the companies like Butcher Box and Omaha Steaks. Um, but these little guerrilla marketing events have helped us kind of just grow the brand of Backyard Butchers. And, um, hopefully you'll hear about us going forward, just like you would hear about, uh, Butcher Box and Omaha Steaks. And we'll just be a, you know, a name-stake like that.
So essentially, it's not, you're not intending for this to be anything more than just a short period of time to, um, advertise and market your, your new business, right?
Yes, I, I do like to call them marketing events, but I know that that may be confusing because we do, we are going to be selling. And so it's not just marketing, uh, but marketing event is the goal of the, the entire event.
Okay.
Does this make more meat eaters in an area or does it, and, or does it take some of the business from local existing companies that are selling meat?
Is there one?
Was that a question for me? I'm sorry.
Like supermarkets, do they, do they, does their, uh, business get hurt at all by this happening?
Well, like I said, you're not going to see us, uh, we're very temporary in nature. So I, I respect and understand the, the local supermarkets. Um, I understand if they may have, uh, you know, like concern, hopefully it's not too great. Um, but we're not, we're not there long-term and the customers that, um, I, I feel like it's a different demographic that we attract, the customers that want to get the specialty cut meats that we're going to be offering. On-demand, on-subscription services, I mean, we have a lot of, uh, we're, we're expecting that some of our, um, well, especially when we do these popular events, like I gave you an example, we have people always ask us, do you ship? Do you deliver? And so people don't have the right mode of consistent transportation. They may not be able to make it to the grocery store all the time. And we are also, are, we individually package and seal, well, the Amity does it for us, individually seals each cut of meat. Um, so you go to the shop, you go to the grocery store, supermarket, you're going to have to buy a pack that if you open it, typically you got to cook all five steaks at one time, however many you get. Since each one of our cuts is individually sealed and packaged, uh, a household of one can easily order a, a case of meat and not have to worry about cooking large orders for themselves. Or on the exact other side, if they have a large party they want to, they want to, um, cook for, then they can just, uh, cook them all at the same time. But I feel like we, we, we attract a different demographic than the, the grocery stores, the supermarkets. And I don't, I don't, I hope it's not too much of a concern for your local markets.
I don't think so. I used to deal with this a lot in Minnesota. We used to have a truck that would come to work once a month and we would order our seafood. And, uh, I see no problem with this.
Yeah, I have no problem with it. All their subject standing.
Okay, well, hold on one second. Since he did not hear what Mr. Maximowski wanted to say, maybe Mr. Dwyer can say it and may, hopefully Ivan will hear that.
Yes, please.
You have to unmute this.
I'm going to give that a shot. It should be okay now.
Ivan, can you hear him?
That was a lot better. Whoever's speaking right now, this sounds really good.
Okay.
Okay, the, uh, uh, what, uh, what Jim said was that we, we really just became aware of this last night when the manager at the mall was, uh, at our meeting on another matter. And, um, we just don't have any background, so we need to see the plans, we need to see the parking areas, what's being, uh, roped off for this, where you're, where you're going to be set up. And then we share that to, uh, the degree necessary with the fire department to be sure that you're not in a fire lane or blocking a sprinkler. Um, it's something, we, we can handle this administratively. It's not going to require scheduling a public hearing and putting a notice in the newspaper. But, uh, we just, uh, uh, had heard that there was some, something of this nature brewing for a while. But, um, initially, the, uh, management at the mall, uh, said that they weren't interested in arrangements of this type. And it was only, uh, recently that they have, uh, decided to go ahead with this. So, uh, yeah, we just haven't had a chance to, to see what the plan is yet.
So Ivan can.
I can understand that. Um, and, uh, to, I, I also appreciate the fact that you said we could deal with this administratively. I've, I've been working on this for a few months now. I missed the, I missed one of the meetings, uh, the timeline and that, that's on me. But I, I, I wanted to make sure that I, I dealt with every, you know, um, proper board or department that I needed to. Um, apologize, I somehow missed the planning board. You are correct, we did have a, a rep we were working with at the mall that, um, was, was working with us and they got a new opportunity. And so in, in the transition of that, I think we got, kind of got dropped. Um, um, just when transitions happens, unfortunately that can happen. Um, but I'm glad the mall's on board now. Um, and it would, I guess, uh, who should I reach out to if, if we're going to move forward with the planning approval administratively?
You can send the supporting documents to planning@hadleyma.org.
Okay.
And our, uh, next meeting is, uh, Tuesday, September 6th at 6:30 PM. The, it'll be a virtual meeting and the login information will be in the agenda that will be posted the week before at the town website.
Okay.
So I'm just going to make a motion to approve this, um, pending approval from the fire department and from the planning board. Otherwise, you'll be end up waiting potentially a month or two and that's just, doesn't seem appropriate. Yeah, second that motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Jane? Last set. Okay, uh, roll call, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Izzy?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
All right. Good luck, Ivan.
Thank you all, and I will, uh, email that planning email, um, with all that information. Thank you all for your help.
You're welcome. All right, and now we have, now we have our fire chief here. So Mike, the ambulance extension. We're going to give you a microphone so you can be heard.
Thank you, sir. So we, we did a review of this with the oversight committee, but also it was sent out to all of you. There's pretty minor changes to it. Uh, the group decided along with the owner of Action that we're going to do a six-month extension, uh, just so we can ensure that we have the best possible service for the town. So it's going to be a six-month extension with a review by oversight. If everything is going well, uh, we will, we'll extend it through fiscal year '23. And the only other portions, um, with staffing shortages that we are having with paramedics and EMTs, uh, we want to ensure that we are not dropped to a BLS level of service as our primary ambulance. So in working with the chief of Northampton, we have put together its Exhibit D in your packet. And basically, it's a memory and an agreement that if Action, for some reason, cannot, uh, cannot maintain that ALS ambulance service, they have a 12-hour window to notify myself and my designee, which is my deputy. Um, and then eight hours to notify Northampton. Northampton will put a detailed ambulance together. That ambulance will come over to Hadley and will be parked in our station. Will be the primary ambulance out for ALS service and our net one will become a BLS ambulance. We'll actually have two ambulances in town. Uh, the town will not incur any expenses from this. This is strictly just a precautionary. We've seen an improvement in the staffing. You've all heard across the state by now, we are, we are in a critical level of shortage for paramedics and EMTs. So everybody is working really hard to, to fill those gaps. Uh, we also added in that there was, uh, the ability to have a $500, uh, the oversight committee would review it. But we don't want them to think that this is an easy way out just to, you know, okay, we're having a hard time, let's just have Northampton come over and handle it. So there was a $500 fine based upon a review by oversight if we see that they're abusing the system. Um, we have all, everything else is pretty much minor, those are the two main ones. We also asked them to amend the makeup of the oversight committee. And basically, it's just changing the language. We would have our, our liaison, which would be Joyce, uh, who's liaison to public safety, one other select ward member, finance committee member, myself, the town administrator, and then two community members. And that just allowed us to build that committee out. Uh, we kind of just changed the names of it. Um, so, and there's been 100% agreement by the owner. He is working tirelessly with us to make sure that we're, we're continuing with the best care we can. And I can tell you that the staff is amazing. There's been no change in the level of service. I just got another letter today, um, from somebody who fell off a bicycle and just wanted to say thank you to our ambulance for their care. And so it's, our, our care is continuing at that top notch. So that's, I'm requesting that you agree the six-month extension to our contract.
Any questions?
I move to approve the extension of the action.
Any?
7/1/22 to 12/31/2022.
Motion by Amy? Second by Randy. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo? Chunglo? I think she said yes, yeah. Parsons? Izzy?
Yes. Yes.
That shit failed, Joyce.
Keegan?
Yes.
Passage to animus. All right. Item 6.8, class-two motor vehicle license. I would like a motion to continue the discussion of this application due to the notice of hearing for delinquent water charges. It's attached piece to your, uh, board ducks.
Make a motion to continue the discussion of this application for a class-two motor vehicle license.
To the 21st of September.
To the 21st of September, um, due to the notice of hearing on September 7th for delinquent water charges.
Second.
Sorry.
Any, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunglo?
Coram is here? Yes.
Parsons? Izzy?
Abstained.
Keegan?
Yes.
Yes.
There you go.
George, you got to be here, we're, we're missing too much of your input. All right.
We put a higher end camp on it to that.
Summer is ending. All right, uh, town administrators report.
Who don't, you don't know? What are?
So, George? She froze again.
So just some announcements first, uh, just to remind you, you do have an invitation in front of you from UMass in the Amish Area Chamber of Commerce for, uh, their annual, uh, community breakfast on September 2nd, um, at the Studio Union Ballroom. Uh, that's, they send that out to local officials and stakeholders, other departments that, um, are, um, contribute and work along with UMass. So, um, if, I know some of you have been there, if you haven't gone, it's, it really is a great breakfast, really good. Yeah. Uh, also from UMass, um, you all have an invitation for, uh, along with other area officials to an information session to learn more about their, UMass's carbon-zero efforts, uh, tomorrow at Draper Hall at 1:00 PM. Uh, you'll have an opportunity to learn about their plan to use geothermal wells to heat and cool the campus. And, um, so I also, and I also want to remind the residents that there is a mandated water restriction placed due to the drought conditions. Uh, special town meeting is coming quickly. Uh, it's October 27th, as a reminder, we are getting our capital requests in. And the warrant is being developed, uh, is in the development stage. And I will be having a new town council. I think some of you had the opportunity to meet town council yesterday. And she was, she's going to work closely with us. Um, I think it might be Joyce's that's doing the feedback, maybe? So, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. She's going to have a fresh look on the warrant and if we're missing anything, she's going to include it. And we're going to be in, uh, constant contact with her as we develop this warrant. Just a reminder to any boards, committees, or departments who, who is going to be submitting an article, if they can just let me know, uh, so I can put a placeholder. And a reminder as well, Friday, uh, due to a planned power outage just for town hall, uh, they need to do that to, um, part of the Mass DOT riding project and some electrical work on the poles. Uh, we will, it's a four-hour shutdown minimum and we don't know the timeframe. So I sent out ICCJL that the town hall will be closed. Uh, employees will have different options I provided them for them to work either locally or in town at different buildings. I'll be at the North Hadley Station, uh, my classes. Um, just some updates on some projects that I'm working with, the DPW. The DPW and the water department moving forward with an engineering study for the Mount Warner valve, altitude replacement valve. Let's see, I don't know if Scott was still on and he would correct me. This is another article that was kind of so dormant and I appreciate that Scott, uh, has brought that forward again. We're working with town, town, that town bond to provide a cost estimate for people replacing the valve in the existing communication system. This is much needed and, um, I'm just really glad that that project is up and running. Also, the assistance from the West Water Department staff, um, is also, and Scott, I'm working with town bond to submit an application for funding from Massachusetts Clean Water Trust Asset Management Group Program to develop asset management plan for sewer infrastructure to allow the town to develop a more proactive approach to plan, fund, and execute needed sewer infrastructure projects. It would also be looking at, um, what, if needed, would there be rate increase in the schedule? So this, I'm excited about that and I'm looking forward, I hope we get that grant. Today, actually, the easiest grant proposal ever. Uh, Scott, myself, and Chief Macy participated in the webinar with the Mass DOT Community Grants Program. They're focusing on rural streets and they had identified rural towns that had streets that had a high probability for rain detection for serious accidents and fatalities. So, um, we submitted a letter of interest right after the webinar and we will be receiving some, um, free signage, which we need, as well as speed feedback boards. This is just to help to, to caution people about speed on those specific roads. So that was great email and I think, uh, again, the easiest grant I've applied for. Um, and I am happy to report that with the assistance of Susan Doratsky, we've finalized, executed our streetlight conversion and purchase. Um, and also set up a maintenance, um, agreement with real terms. So all of those materials have been ordered and the change-out should start relatively soon. So we will begin to see a significant savings in the several months with our, with those costs. So that was a long haul and we're glad it's over and thanks to Susan. So that's what I have right now.
Nice, thank you.
Of a few of the, we would like to, from the select board, send our condolences to the family of Peter Betterstrom, also to the family of Richard Walton, Sr. We would like to send our condolences to Tim O'Hare, his passing of his wife, Susan. I didn't get to say that the last meeting. The firefighter. Susan was much a part of our firefighter family, as he was. So condolences to Tim and Susan's children, Katie and Kevin. Also to the family of Violet Fedema, lifelong resident of Hadley, to their son and daughters, Paul and Susan. And we also have lost Jean Baxter. She passed away and her obituary was, yesterday, which was sent to me, which I think the person that sent, Porter of Hadley. She had her hands in many pots and different venues in Hadley and from First Church and the, Hadley for Girl Scout and the Western Mass Girl Scouts. You know, she just, you know, was a full supporter and many programs for the Girl Scouts. Also, she was part of our parade, part of our, that memorial parade. She was taking traffic and telling everybody where to go. We're going to, to her family also. It's a long, long road for them to do. So, so, to send. I just want to confirm.
So I said before, losing you.
Sandy, I have to make that. Joyce, we stopped hearing you. There was a policy at Hadley, so Sandy, was that in the paper? Okay. So let me wait that one for our next meeting, just to be sure that, you know, whatever it was.
Yeah. Sorry about that, Joyce. It's just getting hard to hear you.
Any other announcements?
I don't have an announcement, but I, I don't know what our protocol is, but I was hoping that we could put something on a future agenda. There's some land available for sale and I think it's something that I'd like the select board to talk about, is a possible purchase for the town.
All right. We'll put it on an agenda.
So can you, so we, that comes across my office frequently. We have different people who, in our delusion, send it out. So can we touch base so I can see if there's some clarification?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, sure.
Anything else? So Joyce, are you going to be here at our, in-person at September 7th?
Looks like she dropped off.
Yes.
Oh, there she is.
Okay, I'm away, so you're going to be running the meeting.
I'm here.
Silence is consent. All right. So our next meeting will be the 7th?
I will, I will person that. Yes. Yes.
All right. Good. Great. All right. Motion to adjourn, settled.
Second.
No, I'm asking for one. I can't make it.
I have so moved.
So moved. Sorry, I missed that. Okay. Seconded by Randy. Roll call, please, Jane.
Yes.
Levin Smith? Chunglo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Izzy?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.